Mayor McCoy.
President. There's no request for continuance of any public hearing agenda item, I believe? So we'll move on to public comments. Madam Clerk, if you'll take care of that.
This is a time and place for public comments. In addition to public comment, all public input for the study session portion of the meeting shall be heard at this time.
We have an encyclopedia here. All right, well, our first guest speaker, uh, public speaker, I should say, Mike King. Come on up, welcome. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you for having me. My name is Mike King. I moved to Thousand Oaks in 1969. I was, uh, negative years old then.
That was back when Colonel Sanders was a corporal.
So I'm here to speak tonight about the 5G that was outlined in the Acorn article of Thursday. And, um, basically what that article is saying, that there's going to be a small cell tower every 300 feet, which in my mind is, congratulations, we all have a cell tower in front of our homes. And, um, as a citizen, after reading the article and doing more research, I feel helpless in this matter. And I decided to speak out for it. I'm not for it, but I wanted to just outline it. I'm concerned about that the FCC, uh, can push the city around and thus push the citizenship around. And that's why I feel helpless. There's nothing I can do. There's no, uh, recourse for the citizen to do anything about it. And, um, I don't think the FCC should be able to do that. So I think, um, as a citizenry, we should band together against this in conjunction with the city council. And, uh, I'm just going to give three reasons why this is a bad idea. I already mentioned the loss of citizen liberty. That's one concern. Possible health ramifications of having a site so close to your residence. And the third would be giving, uh, the city giving up its sovereignty in, um, not allowing to set fees for its private property. So those are three reasons. Uh, other cities, um, in California, Northern California have, um, passed ordinance against this. And I, uh, I would hope that the city council here would consider that. So anyway, in closing, is 5G really worth it? Is it worth being a guinea pig, uh, for big telecom to just come in and do whatever they want and to push the city around? So I encourage everyone to do their own research on 5G and, um, come to their own conclusion, but I, I feel strongly about this, strong enough to come out and speak up against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate that. And I imagine a number of folks in the room hold the same sentiments. Uh, our next speaker will be Paige Nielsen. Thanks for coming out.
I too am here after reading the article in the Acorn. It is now proven by independent scientific research that from around the world, over 200 scientists and doctors from 38 nations agree and demand a moratorium on 5G cell antennas, warning of health effects from higher radiation exposure that can cause neurological effects, heart and brain cancer, and infertility, as just some of the diseases. Dr. Joel McCoskovich, the University of California, Berkeley Public Health Research states, in quotes, "Peer-reviewed research has documented industry influence on studies of the health impacts of wireless radiation. We are insisting on a moratorium on 5G until non-industry research can be conducted to ensure the safety of the public," end of quotes. 5G leads to massive increase of mandatory exposure to wireless radiation 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and blanketing our communities you were put in office to protect. Arthur Firstenberg, a leading worldwide scientist, writes about an invisible rainbow of radiation we can't see, taste, touch, or smell, that's thinner than air and goes through our walls and windows, so there is no shielding against this radiation. The current studies are outdated, which make them obsolete. We need new safe standards and let the people know the truth through education, passing out flyers in our communities, and having our own certified building biologists measure the microwave radiation to share with the public. Why is there this urgency to put up, up to 6,000 cell towers, 60 towers every square mile, when the public doesn't know or understand these proven dangers? Children's skulls, skin, and brains are still developing, and the radiation penetrates 10 times more deep into their growing bodies. It's an assault on our children and adults. The precautionary principle is that until it's proven safe, don't make human skinny pigs. I don't want this within 20 feet of my children's bedroom zapping their fragile bodies while they sleep. These are military millimeter waves causing internal organ damage within 15 minutes. How can we survive if we can never get away from it? We can't and need our city council members to be brave, bold, and speak the truth and protect your communities like you took oaths in office. In Northern California, the city of Danville, their council members voted four to one against the launch of 5G, as well as in Brentwood, California, right here near our neighbors. We need your leadership and stewardship to do the same here in Thousand Oaks and keep cancer-free by having no more cell towers and keep our 10th Amendment constitutional rights. Between all the exposure that's already around us, from cell phones, Wi-Fi routers, 2G, 3G, 4G, this radiation is already saturating our cells. We can use lead, we, you use lead bibs when we go to doctors or dentists for X-rays. And how do you think we can survive with all this around us? We can't wear lead bibs on clothes, lead hats, lead shoes, lead eyeglasses. It's not possible, and that's why you need to do the right thing and choose safe technology that Dr. Beatrice Golan, professor of medicine in the medical school at the University of California, San Diego, states in her letter summarizing the effects of radio frequency radiation. She says in quotes, "Let our focus be..."
We've got to wrap it up here.
"...on safer, wired, and well-shielded technology, not more wireless." And they say this all with kindness, love, and care for you, our community, and our children. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paige. We received it as such. That was very well presented. Thank you, dear. Julie Lowry. And we met this week.
We did. Good evening. I wanted to thank you for engaging the public on setting top priorities. Right? We always appreciate that. When setting your priorities for the city, I would hope that you would consider making health the top priority, health of the community members, number one. It would be nice to see a healthy communities element within the general plan. And, um, if there is a telecommunications infrastructure push, as we just heard, there's, there's a push for that going through the city, um, if that is a priority, and it is important for safety issues as well, I would hope the city council would plan for the possibility of fiber optics in residential areas in lieu of cell sites. I would like to provide the council with a copy of a publication called Reinventing Wires: The Future of Landlines and Networks, which investigates the most beneficial way for cities to provide safe, fast internet access without citing, uh, a variety of cells throughout the neighborhoods. And it's published by the National Institute for Science, Law, and Public Policy in Washington, DC. And, uh, I realize the council is concerned about the community's health and would urge them also to endorse, uh, Senator, or I'm sorry, Congresswoman, uh, Schu's HR 530, the Accelerating Broadband Development by Empowering Local Communities Act of 2019, which would rescind the FCC's controversial 5G order. And, uh, I will provide this. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for taking time this week to educate me on a lot of that. Dr. Kevin Narimore. Good evening, doctor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councils. Thank you for taking your time to listen to me today.
Will you pitch that up for us? Because you, you beat the height limit. There we go. Thank you.
I know there's a lot of things going on, and this is tax season, so thank you for listening. 12 years ago, I could care less about radio frequency, microwave radiation, or, you know, human biology, and not until my dear sister had cancer, I got interested. It's an emotional topic, I'm sorry.
Well, thanks for coming out, doctor.
I had a chance to talk to Dr. Mike Chen, neurosurgeon at the City of Hope Cancer Center. And one conversation we had went into biological effects of electromagnetic fields. And Dr. Chen said, Kevin, he says, "I've looked at the research. There's some junky research, and there's some really good research. And there's enough good research that at my house in San Marino, my wife and I do not have exposure to electromagnetic field radiation from microwaves." And, uh, after that, I went and got training at the Institute for Building Biology. And in my handout for you, I gave you my certificate for that. In this room right now, we have a lot of microwave radiation. I'm measuring it right now. How do we know how much is safe or is dangerous for the public interest? Well, the Russians started researching this in the 1920s, the Germans in the 1930s, and our US Army, Navy, Air Force in the 70s, and NASA in the 80s and 90s. And our telecom industry, which makes just trillions of dollars, has been financing some of the interests years ago, research years ago, that show no harm. But there's an awful lot of research that does. So as you go through and think about what role 5G should play, I hope that you will be, or wise as serpents and harmless as doves. And I've given you some information. I hope you can look at it later. It shows the electromagnetic spectrums, so you can understand where microwaves are. Shows the various safety limits. And civilized countries around the world are magnitude of lower than ours. And why is that? I have the Physicians for Safe Technology has a wonderful paper I've given you to understand the science on 5G. The Environmental Protection Agency, basically downdressing the FCC and saying, "You guys don't know what you're doing and the standards you just set, because you're not looking at, at, you know, biological effects." Now, I would encourage you to look at YouTube to State Senator Patrick Kabeck. He's a Republican, and he was an aerospace engineer before he became a politician. Dr. Martin Paul is the big guy. I hope that you can call him on the phone, have a private session with him. He's, he's the top guy in the, in the world right now in 5G. And I have, um, a letter that was declassified by the Central Intelligence Agency on Russian research on millimeter wavelength, which is what 5G is. And a few other goodies that I won't go into, because I'm sure my time is up. Last thing, I'll just say that Environmental Health Trust is a nonprofit that has a wonderful fact sheet, and it summarizes important information I hope you can all look at. So thank you for allowing me to be here and taking the time tonight. And, uh, good night.
Thank you so much for coming out, and thank you for the information. Our next speaker will be Warren Wolf. Good evening.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to, to voice my, uh, my concerns about 5G today.
Sure.
I saw the article. This is actually my first city council meeting. I've lived in the community for about three years now. Great community. All the previous speakers pretty much voiced everything I, I wanted to say. One, one website that you could look at for additional research is BioInitiative.org. They came out with a very comprehensive report in 2012, and they updated it last year. It's, it's by 29 authors from 10 different countries, 10 holding medical degrees, 21 holding PhDs. And 5G is, is really untested, and it bewilders me why the FCC would go ahead and, and mandate, and that the city council would go ahead and fast-track without public hearings, uh, the applications for 5G, since it hasn't, the biological effects haven't been tested by the FCC. So, um, as one of the other speakers mentioned, um, some cities have passed ordinances to prevent 5G proliferation. Check out Mill Valley, California. They've done that. And there are ways around it. The, the health effects, um, that from early implementation in countries like England, there've been reports of miscarriages and, um, other, other health effects. And so, um, again, I just wanted to voice my, my, my position here, that I, I hope that you guys would stand against this and, um, and do your own research, genuinely. Thank you.
Mr. Wolf, how'd you get involved with being passionate about this? You got a few, few seconds left?
You know, I, I, I just happened upon it. Someone told me about it, and then I did my own research.
Well, thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Next will be, I think it's Judy Bruce. Thank you for coming up.
I'm Judy Bruce. I'm from Seabview Valley, and, um, I've had several meetings with our city officials, educating them on, whoops, on what the wireless and the FCC are not telling them. And, uh, it was shocking when we saw the resolution that you passed to fast-tracking without any public review or notice. It's just outright, it's an onslaught of these so-called small cells, but they're not small in radiation. And these, we can't escape, escape the, uh, the dangerous radio frequency. The industry calls these beams in, um, cancer alleys. A city should never allow a consultant to lead the ordinance who plays both sides and financially benefits from an industry agenda versus serving the best interests of the residents. They should only hire consultants that serves cities exclusively. I believe that, um, Thousand Oaks has been indoctrinated by the myths and fables that FCC and big wireless agenda. The old "our hands are tied" BS is the easiest rock to hide. When Jeffrey Spector prioritized the desire not to get sued by telecom over the duty to protect the constitutional rights of their residents, I call that being bullied. We must challenge all interpretations when the FCC regulation is an overreach and inconsistent with the underlying laws. Yet, there's a big difference between the strict interpretation laws passed by our electorate of representatives versus interpretation of the law. Federal regulations are being challenged in court. The FCC has not yet been successful at redefining service from calls and texts to include video and gaming. There's a important difference between the Telecommunications Act of 1995. That one took all control out of the local control, local. It did not pass. 1996 Telecommunication Act did. Good sense prevailed, and we are, you have the ability, the regulation, to regulate the operation. So we don't have to deal with the FCC radio frequency guidelines, which is based on 20-year-old science for advanced technology. There's two problems. The time of exposure, that's what they plan on, versus 24/7. And it's thermal, if they say, well, it doesn't burn you, it can't hurt you, versus the biological non-thermal, which is DNA damage. So with, uh, any so-called expert, like an attorney, who says that the FCC guidelines are safe, they are lying, and they could lose their license. It is industry propaganda. So Thousand Oaks, stand up to fight, reverse the urgency ordinance with the final. The bottom line, without safe power levels and vertical offsets, so these death beams are not in our bedroom windows, we are very vulnerable. Let's support each other. Let's do what many cities that we've talked about and pass protective ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And next will be Tanya Fox. Hello.
Hello.
It's going to be beat up by the end of the night.
Okay. All right. Good evening, city council members. I'm here to ask you to please consider some alternatives to 5G. The FCC is not all-encompassing. You do have some alternatives here. These two words will help you in solving the problem that all concerned citizens of Thousand Oaks want you to solve, anti-commandeering doctrine. I know that you believe that you have to respect regulations imposed upon you by the FCC, and you in turn will lose all control over the city of Thousand Oaks. This is untrue. In fact, the anti-commandeering doctrine states that federal government cannot make states, their subdivisions, or officers comply with federal programs. Hundreds of cities have banded together to sue the FCC on this very principle. I beg you to consider joining these cities and doing the same. The champion of this is Eugene, Oregon, and I would be happy to supply you with the information needed to make the same claim. The FCC Commissioner, Ajit Pai, opposed his own agency's attempt to usurp state jurisdiction, and the Supreme Court agreed with him. So as you can see, the FCC lost its case. It has already been done in numerous, on numerous occasions. Simply look at the 10th Amendment to understand the power that you have as a city council. We have voted you into office to keep us safe and protect us, our precious Thousand Oaks. Please listen to our requests. Also, along with the 10th Amendment, you could file an amicus brief, which addresses Congress and FCC violation of state and local rights. Patrick Leahy, Bernie Sanders, James Jeffeld, and Tom Tencredo, and their local and state officials, all filed an amicus brief to the Supreme Court in the year 2000 to support a lawsuit against the 1996 Telecommunications Act. The city of Thousand Oaks can do the same to take back local control. Secondly, you can follow the city of Danville, where they denied Verizon a land use permit. This would be a simple way of disallowing the potential 4,000 to 5,000 electromagnetic radiation emitting cell towers in front of our homes. Go to MyStreetMyChoice.com for more details. Or finally, look at the aesthetic ordinance and insist that cell towers be placed at a minimum of 3,000 feet from one another. Please put this on your agenda for the next meeting. You can easily find cases of North California illnesses and deaths caused by cellphone towers within 250 feet of residential areas. This is why no fire station has to have these towers on their antennas. You only need to look around you to realize that there are ways of getting around this. We just have to use research that is not given to us by the telecom industry. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You did great. You got all that in. Susan Winiger.
With the topic of priorities for the coming year, I hope that you do make the well-being of our residents here in Thousand Oaks number one. We all know what the cellular transmitter issues are here. The question is, what makes the city of Thousand Oaks either unwilling or unable to protect its residents in the same way that some other California cities are, by putting some protections into place? The attitudes that I have heard, as other people have mentioned, have been, I can't say an unwillingness, but, um, an excuse that the hands are tied. And hands have not been tied in some other California cities, and they should not be here. The question I'd like to ask the city is why you are not adopting the same measures that some other concerned cities in our state have, because you're capable of doing the same things that they are. Our city is capable of putting in those same protections and parameters, including distance, setback, and spacing. I collected hundreds of signatures of residents in Lang Ranch alone a couple of years ago, and I turned those into the city, and they were all from families just in Lang Ranch who were very worried and concerned. And that was about it. Uh, transmitter, uh, or transmitters in Lang Ranch that weren't even as close as the newly proposed ones are. The city can do this if you put in the time and the weapons. I know that that's hard, especially given, uh, perhaps the city's advisors. I get the feeling that the city also may be afraid of being sued again on this issue, because I know you have been sued previously. And I just hope that you work harder, because I know that you can do the same thing that these other cities have done that are concerned about their residents. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you so much for sharing. Now we have Robert DeSanto.
Good evening, city council, and, uh, Mayor McCoy, pleasure. My first time here. I'm a longtime Thousand Oaks resident, and, um, uh, I have never been to any one of your meetings ever. And so when I read about your decision that you made at the last meeting of 5G, I had to come and speak my mind. The city is hiding behind the fact that, uh, they have no option, according to the FCC. I'm here tonight to present you with, uh, hope. We like to, uh, let me see, we do, in fact, have many options available to us. The first and most important, I should say, being the 10th Amendment. This was specifically written to ensure that there was no overreach of the government on the state. As you have been saying, you have, in fact, lost your authority through the FCC. Currently, applications for new installations of cell towers are made by telecom via a planning commission, pub, uh, commissions, public hearings. Now it seems as if all of your authority is lost because FCC dictates that local agencies cannot put in place rules that have effect, uh, excuse me, prohibiting wireless services. Neither charge, uh, either charge excessive processing fees or refuse to accept, um, batch applications for multiple facilities. However, MetroPCS versus San Francisco, in the Ninth Circuit Court in 2005, uh, just had a decision defining the need for wireless carriers to provide that a significant, quote-unquote, "significant gap" in coverage actually exists. And then directed, let's see, directs that carriers to the, uh, to use the "least intrusive means," quote-unquote, "to close any significant gap in coverage." Herein lies the solution to your problem, because you can make the cellphone companies prove that there is, in fact, a quote-unquote, "gap." Often telecom companies apply for installations only to increase their network capacity for data coverage and not for significant gap in coverage. So, uh, only, so, uh, not only would, uh, do we have the 10th Amendment and MetroPCS versus San Francisco, but we could pursue an aesthetic ordinance, which Thousand Oaks is famous for, um, to, uh, if it was admitted by Verizon's, admitted by Verizon CEO Lowell McAdam, that in truth, that 5G cell towers only need to be five, excuse me, 3,000 feet apart, uh, in order to actually have a, avoid any interruption of service or significant gap in coverage. Applications being made for cell towers every 3,000 feet would then decrease the cell towers from the estimated 5,000 by Jonathan Kramer, both your wireless consultant and an employee of telecom law, let's see, to, um, about 500.
You gotta put a caboose on the comment train.
You got it. I'm almost there. Give me a second here. I'll just wrap it up by saying, uh, the city council members, I implore you not to simply throw up your hands and resign yourself to the FCC. I see your entrepreneurial spirit as, uh, after you brought the Rams here, look into these alternatives from the residents of Thousand Oaks and let us preserve our, uh, our oak trees and not exchange for 5,000 electromagnetic frequency towers. Please put this issue to an agenda so we can vote on the, for real solutions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And now we have Vadim.
Good evening. Good evening, city council and mayor. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak. Vadim Madzov.
Madzov. So you didn't put your last name, so I didn't know if you wanted to, wanted to know that.
Yeah, I know. I was in the area.
I know your last name.
Yeah. As a Thousand Oaks resident for 17 years, I'm saddened that I have to be here this evening. I'm a beekeeper by my trade, by, by trade, and as you know, we are experiencing terrible die-off of our hives. Everyone has a theory, but I can tell you unequivocally, it is because the IMF submitted by 4G towers. And actually, I did a couple of lectures for Los Angeles Beekeepers Association specifically on this topic. I did, I had no idea that I was going to be facing you today and, and this issue. And I emphasize how important it is, because I'm well-known in the beekeepers' circles about producing, uh, a high amount of honey from, from single hives. And actually, I'm, I'm on a path to beat the world record, especially this year with the rain that we've got. And, uh, I play with some weird ideas, some beekeeper, bee criticized, beekeepers criticize me for that, but, uh, I created on one of my hives, a Faraday cage. Faraday cage, if you know it, it protects from electromagnetic field. And as a matter of fact, I found out that honey itself protects bees from Faraday cage. That's why number one and number 10, uh, frames are always pure honey. And as it turned out, that's what protects them from constantly emitting, our earth emitting EMF. But it's a very low level compared what we're talking about with 5G. I'm, I'm shocked the amount of radiation and EMF we're going to get it. It's especially with this five towers, 5,000 towers that, you know, the city want to allow to, to install. It's just horrific. You know, for example, I, um, so, uh, level of EMF emission only is 10 microwatts per square meter allowed, but, uh, not 4 million. If you have that amount, we're going to be all cooked. Yeah, and amazingly enough, I, I was watching, you know, several YouTube videos, and, you know, that confirms, all of them, one after another confirms that it's kind of, we're talking about cooking off humanity, not just bees. I mean, we care for bees, but now we have much more serious issues. And, uh, you know, I try, as a parent of six children, I try to protect my children. We teach them on AMF and this and that. Teach them on AMF and this and that. And now I'm here just to protect them and of course to share with you my concerns that we all face regardless of party affiliation, worldview, just name it. And, and, you know, our city loves our trees, but I guess this problem is way, way, way more serious than what we ever faced. So I want to thank you for listening to me and please consider seriously to find a way not to have that. Good night.
Thank you, Vadim, and thanks for teaching me how to beekeep. We are a bee-friendly city, so this is important. And our final speaker is Mandy Jacob. Good evening.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you for letting me speak. I, going last, I don't have much to say. I had a whole list of things to write down, but I also, first of all, wanted to commend you for the way we pulled through the shooting and the fires. It was so fantastic to give us that thought, TO strong, and it really came through beautifully. So I want to thank you for that. One thing that wasn't addressed though is these cellphone towers every 200 feet have actually been, in front of houses, have actually been proven to set on fire pretty easily. I don't know the technicalities, but again, you can go to, the website is mystreetmychoice.com for all of that. But we've just come out of these huge fires. I can't believe that we've forgotten so quickly and just allowed ourselves to allow this to happen to us. I know Mr. Towns said that, you know, we've got to just pass it because if we don't pass it, we're not going to make the timeframe. But that really isn't a good enough excuse because we've got, if we don't want to go the FCC rule and they've spoken about, you know, the 10th Amendment, the aesthetic ordinance is perfect for our city. And yes, someone quoted the Verizon CEO. That's exactly right. If we can, if we can do it 3,000 feet as opposed to 250, that significantly cuts our numbers of towers down and the radiation that we're going to have to go through and our bees too. So that was the most important thing. And then someone else mentioned the, you know, entrepreneurial spirit of the board. That's a huge thing because if you go onto the websites, you'll actually see up in Northern California, the houses that have these cellphone towers in front of them actually can't sell their houses. And we pride ourselves on being, you know, an exclusive upmarket, high pricing property area. And that is absolutely going to be a downfall for us. The other thing is also, they mentioned liability. There's another liability that we haven't thought of. Of course, you could be sued for the health issues and then you could be sued for, it's called ADA, Americans with Disability Act, because there are people that are electromagnetic sensitive. So that's another expense then that's going to have to come out of the city when you start having to pay all these liabilities for health issues that obviously hasn't been addressed. So there's so many areas where I think it'll actually be to your detriment to not take an aesthetic ordinance and that we could be held liable in so many other areas. So I just wanted to say, you know, thanks again for keeping us TO strong and let's worry about the potential fires that could come out of these cellphone towers. And if we could get this agendized, that would be great too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Folks, thank you for coming out tonight and for all the board, the council. I know we're getting a quick education on all this. And thank you to all the folks who reached out to me this week after the previous meeting to talk with me. I'm grateful. City manager, you have some updates or follow-ups on some of this?
Absolutely. Thanks so much, Mayor McCoy. And appreciate all the speakers this evening. And we, as city staff and I know the city council, we share your concern, your frustration and your anger on this. And that's frankly why we have been fighting this at various levels of government for many years now. And we have a long legislative record of fighting it. This is not a city priority, nor is it a city-driven initiative. 5G, we don't desire this. This is not something that we are pushing or focused on. But unfortunately, as we stand here today, the law of the land from the FCC for 3,000-plus cities in America is this, and that is as of January. The speakers mentioned a number of city ordinances. We're aware of those that have been passed. A lot of those were passed last fall in other areas. And unfortunately, those ordinances today are in conflict with federal law. So the action that the city took last week was simply a protection-based action. That's an action to give, to maintain whatever monicum of control that we can, and that's in regards to aesthetics and some other elements to it, to try to protect our city. We try to be on the front lines addressing these issues on the front side. But every other city in Ventura County today and all other cities in California are under the same rulemaking from the FCC at this point in time. So these wireless networks have the ability to come in and do the things that they're talking about, whether the city council took action or did not take action. So I do have our kind of internal resident expert, Patrick He-Her, here. I'm going to ask Patrick if you don't mind stepping out into, if you'll raise your hand up so folks can see you and talk in a little bit more detail about where we are, why we did an urgency ordinance and why we, why we're going to be bringing forward a full ordinance later. And the fact that the urgency ordinance was designed to try to protect us as best we can from this action that was thrust upon us by the federal government. Finally, I just encourage everyone here, the passion to follow our lead. There is active litigation in place in the Ninth Circuit. Through the League of California Cities, we are actively fighting that in the Ninth Circuit. And we, you know, are unclear as to how that process is going to go, but we are, we are right there at the table along with many other cities in, in fighting this action. So call your federal legislator, your legislator. They are overseeing the FCC. And the FCC has thrust this upon over 3,000 cities in America. And if you're frustrated about that, you need to channel it through to, to those legislators.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I'd just like to also share with the folks that, I know all the council members, this isn't spurious or something that we're, we're out to hide this. We are really responding and this is, for a lot of us, this is new to us. And so folks can testify the fact that I've met with them this week and wanted to get a grasp on it. And speaking with my legislators, I made phone calls. I did my part. We're going to continue to do that. So did you want to add something too? Go ahead. Just turn yours on.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I also received phone calls and left messages. And I wanted to make clear, it was discussed that we would join a lawsuit perhaps, an amicus brief. And is it now my understanding that we are joining the League of California Cities in its legal fight?
As an active member of the League and our advocacy through that, we are a member of that. So in terms of additional procedures, we'd have to go into closed session with council to have that discussion.
We will have a closed session in the near future.
The, as the city of Thousand Oaks is a member of the League of California Cities.
Yes.
League of California Cities is a named party to the lawsuit. There are other cities that have also provided funding to be an additional named party to the lawsuit. Right now, we are involved just strictly through the League of California Cities. Assistant City Attorney He-Her has constant communications with the League of California Cities. The FCC regulations, if there's a desire by council, we can always go into closed session where we can discuss funding, providing funding to the League of California Cities and becoming a named party to the lawsuit as well. But we are, for all intents and purposes, involved in the lawsuit because of our affiliation with the League of California Cities.
Okay. And can we then also take a look at the other cities that were mentioned here tonight, like Mill Valley?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't read all of their ordinances. I know Mill Valley, they adopted their ordinance in September. They're trying to restrict the location of the facilities to certain locations in the city. If you recall, one of the things that the urgency ordinance did for the city of Thousand Oaks is try to incentivize the wireless carriers to put their infrastructure on areas that are further away from residential neighborhoods. And that's the way we approached it, was trying to incentivize them. So it was just a different way of doing it.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's see if we can schedule something for a closed session to discuss this further. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that I am not familiar with the litigation and what has transpired since the Telecommunications Act of 1996. But when the 10th Amendment was adopted in 1789, it said, "All powers not granted to the federal government nor prohibited to the states are reserved for the states and for the people." Obviously, they didn't have cell towers in 1789, but I don't know on what ground the Telecommunications Act of 1996 is placed because I don't know on what basis they're taking that power since it was not originally granted to the federal government. Obviously, it wasn't prohibited to the states. Seems to me it should be reserved for the states and the people, just as the Constitution states. And I would certainly be, want to be part of this lawsuit because I think they're on very shaky grounds to mandate this sort of thing. And I would really like to know on what basis the Telecommunications Act was passed. Did they base it on interstate commerce? Did they base it on the public air? All of a sudden, all the public air.
I can't go into great detail on this.
Let me just finish my last question.
Okay, sure.
I'm asking, is it based on interstate commerce? Commerce clause in which the federal government is granted the ability to regulate interstate commerce? Or is it based on a concept of public airwaves? In other words, do all the public airwaves belong in theory to the federal government? I would think they belong to the states just as well because, you know, they were not granted, obviously, when the 10th Amendment was written. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Can't go into detail on this. This is not an item on the agenda, so I cannot have a debate on this issue. What I can tell you is that the 1996 Telecommunications Act originated through the interstate, through interstate commerce, but it's also expanded over the years. But I'm happy to sit down with you and have a one-on-one conversation with you. Again, we can agendize this in the future since this is not an agenda item and we cannot have a full-fledged discussion on it tonight.
Yeah, I'd just like to research that 1996 act.
We'll do that.
I'd like to know what it was based on.
Okay. And obviously, the council wants more information on this. So folks, thank you. It's very helpful and we so appreciate you coming out tonight.
Just one more thing. I definitely think we ought to join the lawsuit against it.
We can't debate that right now. It's not on the agenda, but we will.
And I do want to stress to everyone here, we are an active.
Yeah, we are active.
We've just been in the lawsuit. So I just want to make sure that's clear for everyone in the room, that we are actively involved.
Yep.